Okay, thanks. All right. Go ahead and get the meeting rolling at 4:30.
Oh, it's here.
Did you want to do the WCAT?
Sure.
So, as you know, WCAT was formed with all the -- it's the Wright County -- Wright County Area Transit was a joint powers agreement between all the participating cities. They have now come to an agreement with the county, with Wright County, to join WCAT. So, the document that you have in there is actually just an amendment to the joint powers agreement adding the county. So, the wording that changed is any place that said cities, they changed it to governmental agencies and governmental units. And then just mention under that Wright County is part of it. So, it's just an amendment to the existing joint powers agreement allowing Wright County to join WCAT. Does anyone need a motion? Yeah. So, I need a motion and I need you to sign this before you pass this down to me.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment of the Wright County Area Transit Joint Powers Agreement.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on it? All right, Ben.
What was the cost to the city? Was there going to be any, like before when we first started, did we pay an ammortization fee or something?
We did be paid in some, and then they, I don't remember what we paid in a couple of years back. This past year, I think, I want to say we paid $300 or $600 this past year. But a lot of the capital was now going to come due, or the money that they needed for the capital for the buses they bought, and, which is nice that Wright County joined because they are giving us the $250,000 that they had. So, that should take care of the capital costs that we needed. So, it should take a lot of the burden off of the cities. If we do owe anything, it's going to be pretty minimal. And the ridership has actually been pretty favorable. We haven't really had to pay much at all over the last couple of years.
Okay.
Numbers keep going up too, right? Yeah. They're trying to add, I think, three more buses. Yeah. Do you know how many buses they have now? They have...
Right in the table?
No, I want to say they have 12, and either they want to go to 14 or 15 in this area. That's where Michelle is assigned, if you guys vote on this. Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, Ben?
Aye.
Floyd?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Melissa?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero. Budget. Okay. So, we... This is the same budget as what the preliminary levy was that you approved. We didn't change any after levy amounts themselves. But it now includes all the enterprise funds, both expenditures and revenues. So, the first thing we had in there was, we did a little budget comparison, last year to this year. For the, we're up about $100,000, which is what we were, which was like the preliminary levy was. If you look at general fund, our general fund is up about $40,000, but close to 60 of that is Wright County sheriffs. So, we've gone down in other areas to compensate for it. The rest of the increase is the trunk highway 25 improvements, that's about $205,000 that we budgeted for. That's for right-of-way acquisitions and engineering to, for the project to get started in 2018. So, beyond that, we really haven't changed a whole lot.
What was that, $205,000 for?
That's on the trunk highway 25, that's for right-of-way, that was an estimate from Justin for right-of-way acquisitions for that trail that's going to go in when highway 25 improvements are done.
And didn't we file for a, under whatever, to...
He, um...
Did we ever get that?
For a grant?
You mean, a grant. It was not approved.
Yeah.
It was not approved.
No.
So, the $205,000 is just mainly for the trail?
It's, yeah, it's for right-of-way and, part of it's right-of-way, about $150,000, and then he estimated about $55,000 for engineering for this first year, because they get a percentage of the project. And working with MnDOT on all the, on all the plans and stuff.
Okay, is 25 going to go all the way up to 12? No, I know what Justin was trying to get it stopped at Seventh, and then we were going to undertake the rest of the way.
MnDOT's giving us the money to do that.
Ahead of time?
As the project moves forward.
So, that the taxpayers don't have to shell out any money?
MnDOT's committed $600,000 to that project for a while. As you recall, the council had to sign an agreement with MnDOT a few months ago to proceed with that, and that's part of that agreement.
And we also put in there a copy of the capital improvement plan, which was what we had approved, okay, that approved about a year back. So, these projects are included in this, in the budget.
Was that already?
Just going to the, into the panel a bit further. So, the money to replace, like the truck, is included in the capital improvements. Backup generator, that's some part of the sewer fund that's included in the enterprise funds. The lighting on Highway 12 for solar lights, and how 12 is in the capital improvement section. So, I had put all the revenue and expenditure budget in there, which, what we worked up, the money that we anticipate getting, and the money that we anticipate spending. I don't know if anybody went through it, if they had any questions on any specific line items, or anything that Sean and I can try to...
If you go back to the capital improvement page, the big one, and you say it went out to the single axle haul truck. It originally was estimated at $45,000 a year. That has changed to $30,000 through the municipal lease that's offered by Western Star. It's a seven-year lease, and then after the seven years, the city can buy it for a dollar. It would be a war. Let's hope we don't ever have to use it like...
So far, so good.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions on any of these things specific, or before we go on any progress? Just looking at the comparisons, the legal is just because of negotiations, correct? Well, we upped, if you go to, this one that says expenditure budget, we're cheap. Go to like the second page on the very bottom. It'll say legal. We budgeted $30,000 last year. I upped that to $32,000 this year, only because at $2,500 a month is $30,000, and it doesn't anything above and beyond, so I put an extra $2,000 in to just be safe. And then $10,000 in for union negotiations. We maybe won't use that much, I have no idea. Last time didn't cost that much, but we don't know, so...
Are you negotiating?
We'll be starting, we talked to them last Monday, and we're getting a rough draft. And I start in January for them, and then you guys don't start until... Ours is the end of, ours is like the end of December. So, they usually start running in the summer.
Yeah.
So, that's why we upped legal a little bit. Fire department went up a little bit too.
That's the special assessment rate, so everybody's taxes went up $25, just to cover the, up the special assessment that was approved back in April or May.
So, they went one of their 25 for like ten years, nine years, and they went to 150 now to start putting money away for their fire expansion and vehicles and stuff. So, theirs is pretty much whatever they take in from the townships and the city, it's kind of an in and out. Have we done memorial donations before? I see that on here. I mean, we have it at zero, but I've never, why we've had it on there before? Under which, where to count? Park and Rec. I don't know what's that for. Yeah. Oh, that's cool. It's probably an account that's been out there some people, I saw it. And then I did have, I wonder if we were doing that, that might have been set up when people were giving us money to build park benches. And stuff with their name on it? I think we set up as memorial donations. Oh, okay, okay. And then I did have Park and Rec ask about carpet field concessions. I guess it's in their improvement plan, Parks and Trails Improvement Plan? I'm here.
But that's under, that's the revenue side, not the expense side.
Right, but we still don't have nothing in it.
Under the expenses again?
What's, um... What is going to be, what was in the Park and Trail comment going to be?
That's not scheduled for '18. We had it back in August and went over to CIP and for Park and Rec, and it was determined to focus on lighting and trails. I actually looked that up from the, that's why I looked it up.
Is that a, I don't know.
I know we had a meeting, but I forgot what club it was.
See if something highlighted, Joe, any questions or something?
I mean, I just had under the council, under the general fund, the office of women and furnishings. We've not used it in 2016 or '17, but we have a thousand bunch of it, so it's just...
Well, you might need new chairs at the community center, because those are getting really gross.
And that was my next question, is how, like, what comes out, comes out of that?
That's what, that's what it's kind of there for, because they're getting all, I don't know how, but they're getting all stained and it kind of grows. And I don't know what to do. I mean, I don't think we get the big arm chairs. I think like that one that's just on the wheels without the arms is probably sufficient, because then it'll sit under the desk better, because I think some of it's getting banged up too when the desk gets moved.
Have we paid for the repair on that pillar yet at the community center?
We just didn't paint it, because it was cold, the thing repealed, so we'll wait until spring. We got reimbursed all but our deductible from the union subsidies from our insurance. What is the volunteer expenses? It's at 462, what's it? Under general fund? Yep. It's the volunteer, if you have a volunteer dinner and...
That doesn't come on a, a prep form?
Mm-hmm. Okay. No, a couple of years ago, council wanted it switched from Park and Rec. That's right. Am I allowed to ask a question? I just want to know what the fund is. The what? It says R 101-33421 Insurance Premium Tax Dash Police. I was just wondering what it was. We received money from the state of Minnesota to offset our cost, our policing spends. So, we get about $10,000 or $11,000 a year. Now that our police, the cost of our policing went up because we increased the hours, we'll probably get a little bit more. Anything else, anybody can think of? Move on to the next, the next item I put in there was the net tax capacity. So, we were pretty close when we guessed, for the preliminary budget certification, the levy certification, we guessed $1,950,000. Right now, it's estimated at $1,971,000. So, based on that estimate, which will change, I mean, it can go up or down, but normally it'll go up even more once they get all their calculations. If we remain at the same as we did with the preliminary levy, the $1,126,666, if you go to the sheet that just says November 27th on it, so it's about a 10% increase dollar-wise. It's $102,424, but the tax rate, the increase in the tax rate is 1.98%. So, if you go down below, if your property was valued at $100,000 in 2017, you would have paid 552. In 2018, you'll pay 629, which is about $6 more a month. Same with $150,000. And what I did was, in 2017, if your property was at $100,000, it probably will go up to about $110,000 this year, so that'll be the amount of your tax. Same with your house was, if your net taxable amount was $150,000, it'll probably be $165,000 this year, so your taxes will go up about $10 a month. And that's what these are. These are just copies of some tax statements that I just randomly pulled off the city's, or the county's website, and I just wrote in there last year and this year's. Underneath, up in the top, it says taxable market value. Last year, like this one, was $104,800. It went up to $109,900 this year, which was a 4.87% increase. Their taxes would go up $4.15 a month. If their house, the next one was valued at $126.7, it's going to go up to $135.3, so their taxes will go up $6.19 a month. That's what, I just pulled four of them off at all different price ranges. I went from down by $100,000 up to $199,000, so, just to show what the tax, how much the taxes would go up. So, the most expensive one, $199,700, went up about 8% in market value, their taxes would go up $10.24 a month, if we stay at that taxable E. So, not a significant change. The only thing that I changed on the levy, the proposed levy, what we got proposed originally, the only thing I changed was I shifted a little bit of the LGA to parks, a little bit more to Park and Rec, because we were planning on doing $50,000 to cover the expenses, but the expenses, we need to do about $65,000 to cover the expenses for the regional parks. So, shifted it out of capital improvement over to parks to cover that. So, that's the only thing we were going to change. All the bottom numbers all stayed the same. So, I don't know if anybody has any questions or suggestions or thoughts or ideas, or... It will be, December will be our truth and taxation hearing at the council meeting. So, it'll be a public hearing. Usually, nobody shows up, but if somebody does, they have the right to be up and speak at public hearing. And then you need to actually adopt or certify the levy, so we can send it over to the county. So, this is the time, if you don't want it to go in at this amount, we have to, now is the time, so we have time to figure it out before the December council meeting.
So, what figure did we end up at?
The total amount that to be certified that we did for the preliminary, and we didn't change it for the final, I mean, stay the same. It's $1,126,666. We have to change that, 666. You can make it 670, I suppose.
We can't increase it.
665.
I guess I just, I'd like to know if the council has a, feels has a good understanding of how all of this that we've talked about impacts property tax. I mean, how is your property tax on your particular property set? Does everyone here have a good understanding? Because now is, if you need a, if you need, you know, a simple, I can explain it in one minute, five minutes, or half an hour, your call.
Soon you can go to five.
It's going to one.
You know, so, um, I think what, you know, essentially, if we've, what you're seeing is a tax capacity increase. If you kept the levy the same as it was last year, that would decrease your property taxes on your property. If you increase the levy by an amount under the increase of the tax capacity, then your individual taxes should still go down. It's only when, if the levy is, matches the increase in the tax capacity, then the relationship between the value of your property versus all the property in town, that number stays the same, it's constant, like a fraction. Then you take that fraction and multiply it by the levy, and that's your tax. So... Perfectly understood, I can tell.
I understand it. I'm good.
Is everybody comfortable with it, or? Or, yeah, the problem is, is, I know, and we've said this over the last couple of years, is we stayed flat for so long. When the economy was bad, we didn't want to raise taxes, and we stayed flat for so long. And we also did nothing. We didn't do any new projects, we didn't, you know. And now the time has come where we have to do them, because some of the streets are literally falling apart, and things are happening, and we don't have a choice, you know, same highway 25. It's either do it now, or you aren't going to ever do it, because they won't, the state certainly isn't going to do the project again for 25 years. And, you know, at some point, we have to be able to fund it, so it's either, nobody wants their taxes to go up. I agree. And I just got my preliminary tax statement for Rockford Township, and I would love to get this increased.
Me too.
Buffalo just keeps, you can't... This is your third year of what, 10 or 12%?
Twelve and a half this year.
Mine went up about 14% in Rockford Township.
Still is in the double digits, I guess.
So, you know, I'm not, not saying that anybody wants to go up, and not saying that this, you know, that that's the answer, but it, it is what it is. Well, and I, like I said, in order for us to do the projects, we have to, we have to be able to fund them somehow, and at some point, you know, we don't want to, all of a sudden do like what Buffalo did and say, "Okay, we did downtown, and now your taxes are going up to 12%." Now, we can go up a little bit at a time. I mean, our tax rate is an increase of 1.98% or 2%, basically. That's a lot better than 12%.
The only thing I caution everyone on is, people are going to pay the 10%. Brahm, we had this discussion in Clear Lake, and the tax capacity increase is one thing, but I caution you to say that people are only going to get a 2% tax increase, because when the statements come out and it's more than 2%, you're going to get phone calls.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I put that on here, that, you know, where I was, like, their increase, this one, the increase in amount of the taxable, the market value, the taxable market value, their increase was 4.87% in the taxable market value. However, with the tax capacity increase also, so I did figure out this percentage.
The other thing is that, just because the levy hard number itself is 10%, doesn't mean Ben's property taxes will go up 10%, or Jill's will go up 10%. There's so many variables in it. Some may go up 15, 20, some may just go by. So...
It all depends on that, also on that homestead exclusion, how the state chokes it's that. So, are we okay, or are we thinking something different, or? Like I said, now would be the time, so we can...
Yeah, if you're not comfortable with that levy amount, now is the time to think about what, where you want to trim it. So, what we'd like to do is try to present a final levy number that you're comfortable in, that you think you can sell to the people. I don't think a decision has to be made. Tonight is something you can think about, and then we can integrate it, you know, have some, something on paper, if you want to bring it up at the council meeting. What would be the impact if we cut this a little bit?
Well, we have to approve it though at the council meeting.
We have to approve already at the meeting, right. But what I'm saying is that if there's, if you're, if there's areas that you believe are overfunded, that, if you're getting heat from your, from the people in town, to lower that number, that's what I'm saying. If nobody complains, or you're comfortable with it, then fine, but I just want everyone to be prepared if that happens. So, because the statements have gone out now, right? Yeah, so, has any of you guys gotten phone calls from people?
Not a single one.
Okay, then you're cool.
They just got one, we can't help them. Probably haven't been known in a month yet.
We had mine for...
I've had mine for a few weeks.
Yeah, a couple, two, three weeks now.
For real?
I've had mine for several.
Yeah, I gotta wait before things come in. Yeah.
A silver and first cracker special.
Evidently. Yeah, because I know, my wife and I were dead and talked about it at least two weeks ago.
So, 60% of the increase is just for sheriff's department? Want to look at it that way?
Yes.
But we've cut in other areas to...
I mean, it's, it's a cut other than that.
What was that?
If you take off the increase in, in Sheriff's coverage, that's lower expenses next year.
What would be the feedback if we went back to where we were with the Sheriff's Department?
You've already signed the contract.
Yes, that wouldn't, that would, that wouldn't impact budget if you've already signed it.
Yeah, we've already done it.
I was just asking, I was like, what would be the impact if you didn't have a contract with the sheriff? And they gotta come for calls anyway, regardless whether you got a contract or not. Your contract is for...
But they'd only come for calls. They'd only come for calls.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
There wouldn't be for anything else.
Right. So, I'm just asking, what would the, what then would be the impact?
Well, you would take that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars figure...
I think their, I think their rate went up to seventy-two dollars an hour, so be three hundred and sixty-five days times eight times seventy-two.
I mean, so then your, would your, your net here would end up potentially going down versus going up? Just asking.
I think that's part of a broader discussion the community has about how much police protection it wants.
We have that major discussion.
Yeah, and that's not really the discussion here. I'm just asking number-wise, if you didn't have it, where would your, where would your levy end up then?
Oh, that's, that's, that's an easy question. If you took two hundred and sixty-two thou, I mean, if you eliminated it all together, or went back to have what you had?
I guess either one. I don't care, I'm just asking, just numbers-wise, just, you know, are you looking at, instead of an increase of ten dollars a month, you'd be looking at an increase of two dollars a month, or you'd be looking at no increase, or, you know, just roughly?
Well, if you just went with no contract, other than the fact that we're in Wright County, they got services. Then you take the two sixty-two eight and subtract it from four million, three eight six, and that would be less expense.
Right, but I mean...
It would go down from here, from one year to next. As far as the, how much, what was the difference in the per hour rate?
I mean, I'm talking like, you know, one percent overall, you know?
Well, two sixty-two eight to four, three eight six is somewhere in the neighborhood of four, somewhere between four and four and a half percent. So...
Not that huge of a...
But you wouldn't want to look at that number if you had your own police department.
No, I just...
That'd have two, that'd have two commas.
Just asking.
So if you went back to eight hours, your increase from last year to this year in police would only be about seventy-three hundred instead of fifty thousand, instead of sixty-five.
But if you had no contract with the Sheriff's Office, you also wouldn't get police state aid from the state either.
Right. So what's that amount?
Eleven thousand, ten thousand. So that's, is this what you want us to present on?
They have a jump, most cities are only going about five.
Buffalo went twelve.
Buffalo went twelve, Delano...
My township went fourteen.
Delano was at seven point nine.
What did you say?
Delano started at seven point nine, they're at seven point seven.
Delano went up then?
Yep. And then Carver, which is in that direction, was like six point six.
So, I can only blame myself.
I don't remember them all off the top of my head, but I looked at like all the surroundings after we went through this in what, September, October, whatever it was?
I think it's kind of like what I said earlier, it's, everybody stayed so flat for so long, and now it's, the economy's coming back a little bit, and projects need to be done, and...
Well, metaphorically speaking, you can only do so much with W P for you.
And we did that for quite a while ago. We tried to hold out as long as we could.
Let me see if we can afford to do anything else, you know, period.
Yeah.
What'd they do up there in Clear Lake? What did they do up there in Clear Lake, what did they do?
For?
For the tax month.
Didn't you say twenty percent?
Well, I think we went, our philosophy is, let's, 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 we tell them that our department has, our staff, that they, you know, what do we need? Ask them, what do they need? And then, it ended up being, I think, ten, ten, eleven percent. But I have one of the lower-valued homes in Clear Lake, and so now that the economy is coming back, my value went up a higher percentage than the others. And so, so I, my city taxes went up like twenty on my property. Wasn't very pleasant pillow talk when I got the statement. It was not happy, but, uh, but for the majority of the homes that were built in the last fifteen years, theirs was right about what, the ten percent? And I didn't, haven't gotten a phone call, and our, our T and T hearing will probably last about ten seconds.
Our general... We very rarely have anybody...
The only time that we had anyone show up, I wasn't on the council at the time, but due some financial mismanagement by our finance director, we were robbing an enterprise fund for general fund purposes. And so to take care of that, um, the, I know my property tax is quadruple. Everybody in town had a minimum of two hundred and fifty percent property tax increase. Some people had five hundred percent. Every, every, every voting age resident of the town was at that T and T hearing. I kid you not. I mean, it was jam. And, uh, but in a small town, you know, it's like, council, they pay it too. You know, it's, can't be too critical.
That's why I pulled these tax statements, because the values I wrote on there, on the top, like where I wrote the one oh nine nine and the one thirty-five three, that's actually the values, the twenty eighteen values I've been putting in. So those are the actual values from the county. And then I just calculated what the tax rate would be based on that, and then wrote what the increase would be, so. These are pretty close, what the, the increase would be. So this house that's went up four point eight percent in their taxable market value will have a fifty dollar increase for the year, which is four dollars and fifteen cents a month. So those should be pretty close, unless, I, I don't see them changing any of these. They're just waiting for some of the final numbers to come in, to do the final tax, um, taxable market values, but these have already all been set. So if you're, if everybody's okay with that, then that's, we'll present it at the meeting and... More discussion then.
I think Gloria's still not sold yet. No, that's not... I'll stop it sometime.
Yeah, Lucy, if you have any questions, just come on in. We'll be happy to show you where we came up with the numbers, if you have any certain, they have questions. Until we write discussion or...
Well, as you can see, um, the capital improvement, or the approved capital improvement plan that we looked at in quite depth in twenty seventeen, um, is a project that was coming up that's slated for twenty eighteen is the replacement of the old wellhouse and well number two. I'm told, if you all recall, the field trip we took in the conditions that that was in consensus that you need to look at replacement of that. With that, if you look at this smaller spreadsheet, it is identified as capital improvement, twenty eighteen capital improvement debt service. And if you go down to the bottom where it says new debt, um, wellhouse, well, wellhouse option A at roughly a million dollars to complete that project. And the annual bond payment is roughly around sixty-three thousand, depending on the interest. I think we calculated this at about three percent. We've since submitted paperwork to PFA now that our state legislature is heading forward finally. And a little bit of rumbling I've heard is one point one percent for PFA money. So that number can change. But on top of that, in order to fund that, we have to do an increase on the water fund. Um, we are reallocating, um, almost forty thousand once the bond payment for highway twelve, or highway twenty-five water main extension is done, which is due, or callable...
Immatures in twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, yeah. So that will be done prior to, and that payment will transfer or re-be reassigned to the wellhouse. In addition, which covers about fifty percent of the bond payment, or the future bond payment. And to generate the extra revenue, to ensure that that bond payment is being paid, we have to look at a fifty cent per thousand increase to make up the difference. Which, for that type of project, and it could be a lot worse as far as the increase. If you want to look at, I had Jess and Wendy help the two with, we did a rate comparison several different Wright County cities. And if you look at the water, which is... I guess it'd be the top two tables on the colored graph. And we are right in the ballpark of other cities, for the most part. This project will essentially guarantee the city residents, um, a future reliable water source. Whereas this one, we are, in my opinion, any money that we stick on that now is money wasted where we could be putting it into modern facilities. And in order to do that, we need to look at that, um. Also, since I made this debt schedule, we're looking at possibly twenty-five cents in eighteen, and another twenty-five cents in nineteen, if that were to help. Spread the burden, I guess, would be the word to say. Either way, it'll be, the fifty cent increase will happen when the bond payments will start being, to be made. We've already submitted paperwork for PFA funding, um, that, for that, and a couple of other projects that are down the road. Just for the fact that we don't know from here to here whether they're gonna approve it or not. And there is a list, a gigantic list, it's called an I U P list, intended use plan, that you have to submit. Um, all the cities statewide are required to, if they are gonna get PFA funding, they need to be on this list. And this project here ranks number seventeen of four hundred or so. So it's very high on the priority list. I would say that the advantage of this is that you're essentially getting very, very, very cheap money throwing this around. So with that, that's the only increase we're really proposing, is for water, to...
And store water?
And store water?
And you do quarter and store water?
Oh, yeah, sorry. And twenty-five cents per month for store water.
Sean, I have a question.
Yes.
And if I, I, I see a water base rate comparison, sewer base rate comparison, and then on the next page, a water consumption rate comparison. Okay, what, and right now ours is the same, five-ten for the rate, five-ten for consumption. But that's not the case for other cities.
It just happened to fall that way.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Just, and over the years, the increases we've had in the consumption just happened to land on the same amount as our base rates.
But what I guess, what I'd like to know, and I'm begging that there's five council members that are thinking the same thing I am. When you look at Howard Lake with a twenty-six dollar and eighty-eight cent base rate, but a four dollar and twenty-six consumption rate, what does that mean?
Technically, base rates cover debt. That's usually what they're structured for. However, in Montrose, it is easier to generate revenue per thousand than it is to increase a thousand base rates.
Right, okay.
That way, the, the more you use, the more you pay towards any facility. So, kind of the philosophy that I've been going for many, many years, is that philosophy, the more you use, the more you pay. So if you've got people that use three thousand gallons compared to people that use ten thousand gallons, you're using the infrastructure more. And in, when you're doing that, you're paying more. So if we were to generate the same amount of revenue, um, for the thirty, almost forty thousand, I guess I'd have to do the math quick, thirteen hundred times plus five bucks, times twelve.
Thirteen hundred times five times twelve, seventy-eight thousand.
So that would be roughly, that'd be two dollars and fifty cents increase on the base rate to generate the same amount as a fifty cent increase on the per thousand user rate, equivalent.
So what you're saying is the base rate is supposed to cover capital, and then anything above that is the operations for maintenance?
That's typically how it goes, yes. Especially in larger cities where there's way more users, more connections. But to avoid a thirty dollar, or even a twenty dollar, or even a fifteen dollar base rate, I've kind of worked it to where the per thousand rate... where the per thousand rate absorbs an additional revenue that where the base rates wouldn't capture. That's why, that's the way it is.
Thank you. Franchise fees will be on electric.
Electric and gas.
So...
No, no, we know, that's all private utilities, that would be franchise fees.
Yeah, and that's to be negotiated with Exelon Wright County, and so, that's why you don't see that on revenue stream for next year, because we don't know what that's going to be, and we don't know when it's going to start, so...
So, as we move further down into 2019, 2020, 2021, and years beyond, we have another project that's coming up, is the original townsite project, where we are at an opportune moment, where all this worked out, I don't know if you remember me telling you this in the capital improvement plan, where as debt falls off, we can reassign that current debt payment to new projects. And it has worked out, the way we've got it, to where this 50 cent increase plus another dollar increase in a couple of years to do this $5 million, or $7 million project here, those are the only increases for, what do they have, $25 million on the bucks of projects to do? So, I think the dollar and a half increase for all that is a very small cost to pay for, you know, we've done everything we can to restructure debt, moving forward with all these projects. So I guess, kind of thoughts are we looking at from the council?
My thought is, before we consider approving this, since we get so much grief on social media about our water, and all of that, and it's easier for you to explain it than it is for us to explain it?
We did have that...
We did.
...2017, out of home, you know, about three people showed up.
Yep, but, if they see...
I can search you right away.
If they, no, if they see that we're increasing, you know, considering increasing this amount, and they have questions, would you be willing to, so, you know, if we had like a special meeting, to explain? Because when they get on social media and start ripping us apart, you know, I'm not even going to attempt to answer a question.
At all, you've texted me 900 times a night, that somebody was pestering you on social media.
Yeah, this on our webpage, or on our Facebook page?
Well, I can, no, let me post something on, on the city's website, and the two other ones. I'll have Sean work with me on that, try to make it layman's language.
But truly, why do we have to have a special meeting? Why can't they just come to the council meeting?
Well, I mean, yeah, whichever.
If they're aware that it's going to be at the council meeting, for discussion will be had, and tell them to come to that.
It'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Right. I mean, just so that they're aware before we approve, and that they have that chance to speak. If they don't show, they won't show, that's their fault, that's not ours, but at least put it out there.
This has been a secret, this has been out for quite some time.
Yeah, but they don't see it.
Well, they've seen...
We see it, but like I said, I'm not, I'm not going to take it upon myself to answer them questions, because you can answer them way better than I can.
I can certainly do that.
So, so, yeah, I mean, if you just put it out, that this is what we're considering, and if you have any questions or concerns, come to me.
And a quarter on the water, and then a quarter on stormwater. Stormwater's just a flat rate, so it'll go from $4 to $4.25 each month.
Right.
And that's basically just for operations, because now that we have all the stormwater ponds all over, in the developments, we have to keep them clean, in order to rent the equipment, to clean them out, and just to stay above, I mean, right now, our expenses, when we do our budget, ends up more than what our revenue is. Even though we haven't spent that much, because we haven't spent that much in expenses, but we've been trying to cut everywhere we can, but we have to start getting it up, so, don't run into the hole.
The other thing that might be helpful is to figure out what an average consumer uses here in the city, and say, you know, if your bill was this, this is what it will be. Because truly, like, I can kind of understand this, because I kind of understand what we're, you know what I mean? But I think for most people, if they know their bill is $100, what is it going to go to now?
If you use 5,000 gallons a month, at a quarter, your increase will be $1.25.
Correct. And so I think that's what you need to point out, is, if you use 5,000 gallons, your bill is currently X amount, your new bill will be X, you know, Z amount, whatever.
Yeah, so, that's why I said, he made it basically a quarter per thousand gallons, so...
Yeah, and they all think we're trying to just make money of profit money, you know, but we really can't do that, and that's what they don't understand, so...
Is to do the projects and pay what we need to pay, by the chemicals that go in the water, and...
Yeah.
Right.
Keep the maintenance going, and...
Well, I don't want to be the one answering phone calls when I don't have water either. And I can say, my water bill that I have here is way lower than what I had in Iowa, and I had a two bedroom, yeah, two bedroom townhouse, and two bathrooms, and it was my wife and I, and ours, and our daughter, you know, and I didn't have a faucet outside, I didn't pay for anything outside, you know, I watered the garden, kids playing the sprinkler, and my water bill was lower than what I had there. I, I have not seen the issue with the water, that some people claim that they have, I guess I have, have to put it on them, is, when was the last time that they checked the efficiency of, A, their toilets, B, their faucets, C, their water softener, and until you check all those, don't come have a conversation with me.
That's the big one, is the water softeners.
And...
Sometimes I don't even think it's the efficiency of the appliances, I think it's...
Doing your dishes and letting the rinse water just running the same.
Well, yeah, just how much, how much money wasting, I mean, and we've talked about it before, and...
Yeah, because I mean, well, we've talked about like...
Yeah, I mean, my water bill's super cheap, I think, compared to other people that I've heard from around here.
We have an employee that lives in Howard Lake, and their, his bill is just about $200 every month, and he only uses like, 7,000 or 8,000 gallons a month.
Yeah.
His bill is almost $200, $200 a month.
If it puts it into perspective, when we first went back here, and we were living with mom and Norman Wayberly, so there's four people in the house, that's, that's it, you know, just normal, everyday things, their water bill was $400 for one month.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think...
Where was that now?
Wayberly is high enough.
So is Howard Lake.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I used to say that too.
Well, and then one of our employees that still lives, already said his is, his is just, I think he brought in one of his bills, and showed us, it was like $197. I mean, that doesn't make it any easier when you're trying to say, we have to increase the rates, because nobody wants to pay it, but it's, we also aren't, when they were saying that we're the most expensive around, we're not.
I took my bill into Delano Utilities, and had them compare it, item for item for item, and if I had the exact same bill and lived in Delano, my bill would have been $5 and more than what it is here.
So we're about the same, we're pretty, and they actually have more people to pay for theirs than we do, which also helps them, because you have to treat everything the same, you know, we have to treat the wastewater just like they do, so...
So this is on December's, right?
We'll also present the increase in the Sack and Wax, which is on the builders, that gets charged with the building unit, so, if the residents are going to pay an increase, the builders will pay an increase also, for connection fees.
There's lots of building going on out in...
That's a general, every year, every month, not every month, every year we usually raise a little bit.
What's up with that first house?
That's the model.
I have one there, okay, with all those parking spots. Matt initially was like, they're building an old folks' home, he knew nothing about it!
Well, there's a lot of windows in that house, I was inside of it, and I got a lot of windows in that one.
Cool, it's good for us.
I don't know, how many permits they've turned in?
Eighteen, I think. They are building... Seventeen, eighteen, so... Have you been back there recently? You should go back there, it's pretty remarkable.
It was about, probably about a month and a half was the last time I was back there, or back there.
Go on. It's amazing.
I think they've got four or five houses framed up already, in addition to the mall.
So this is across the street from us, this isn't in Forest Creek, it's in White Hills. So they're still building in Forest Creek, and this is in addition.
Yeah, they're only focusing on the townhouses now, though.
In Forest Creek?
Yeah, they've basically...
They pretty much run out of lots, haven't they?
No, they, they've still got, they've still got them, they've got five in construction that I can see, stones thrown from my house, and they've basically stopped on them, and focused on the townhouses.
They must have some people that want to buy townhouses or something.
They've got one sold.
One sold.
Oh, that's it.
And they're building five and six right now, and then they've got...
They're grading seven and eight and nine and ten.
Well, I think they're grading all the around with the dirt that they've dumped.
I don't know.
It's, it's kind of the way it looks to me, but, but yeah, I mean, the three, the three that they have that are the top under, they've basically stopped working on them, and then they've got two that I think are going to be the bigger ones, that they just have the footings done in the walls for the basement, and stopped.
Do you have to have that done within a certain period of time?
Hundred eighty. Two, in between inspections. Some of that stuff they also did, I'm sure, because they poured the basements when it was still nice out, and then they'd come back and build on the house later when it's cold. Because they don't want to pour a lot of the dirt.
You hope that they discuss, of course. It's great. Earlier, I think.
Are there any other questions? Anything you came up with, in the meantime?
I'm also sure Jerry?
Second.
On the table?
All right.
Any applause? I think I did anything about Casey's, a grand, not like grand opening, but...